So.
Less people are parking on campus.
I mean, they've got six hundred of my dollars that we're supposed to build a parking ramp.
Now, no more. Copy link. View title. Paste and go. There we go. This is the stuff I always forget. I have the minutes on my phone and I read through them, but then I never put it on the laptop before I get here. Because I don't open this thing up. It just sits there. Come on. Let's go. Come on, beat the buzzer. We're up, right, bro. That close enough. Welcome all. I'd like to open the Middleville Village Committee of the whole meeting. Rhonda, may I have roll call, please?
Mike Kramer.
Here.
Stephen Baldry.
Here.
Robert Bishop.
Here.
Richard Hamilton.
Here.
Mackenzie Peters. Kevin Smith. Anne Williams.
Here.
I haven't heard from either, so you guys know what's going on?
I do. All right. I'll make a motion to excuse trustees Peters and Smith.
Support.
We have a motion with support to excuse trustees Smith and Peters. Any further discussion before we vote? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Get a loud pledge today and nobody's angry. Best day ever. All right. Everyone should have a copy of the agenda.
I will make a motion to approve the agenda.
Support.
Support. All right. We have a motion with support to approve the agenda as printed. Any further discussion before we vote? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Public comment? If anybody would like to make a public comment, please approach the podium.
We always hope somebody does. Good afternoon. My name is Victor Humphrey. I am the Scout Master for Troop 105 here in Middleville. You'll notice all the scouts over here, what we're here for is to complete their Citizen in the Community Merit Badge, which is required to become an Eagle Scout. So I wanted to make sure all of our troop got that Merit Badge. Basically, what they're here to do today is just observe after your guys' meeting. If anybody feels can stay after, part of their merit badge is to ask some questions about any issues they see in the community and what's being resolved with that. The goal here is to, there's a bunch of Citizen Merit Badges, Citizen in the Nation and Citizen in the World, and outside of the leadership portion of scouts, this is to teach them to be good citizens. So them being able to find problems in the community, take it to the correct people, and ask questions to get it addressed is the goal of today for them. Thank you for having us here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? All right. We're gonna move on to village project updates.
Brandon is on a cruise ship at the moment, so I will give a couple of updates. We had a pre-construction meeting for the Dearborn Project today. They're expected to start next week, actually, and then wrap up by the middle of June. Is there a goal on that? So we're gonna close down that road, and which, I mean, it's been mostly closed on and off for the past couple of years anyhow, so it shouldn't be a huge, huge issue there. And then we had the bid opening for the High Street Project. Bids came in lower than estimated, which never happens, but did this time. So we'll have a recommendation for you next couple meetings for that.
So that's pre-engineer review?
Yep.
Hope they didn't miss anything.
What's ahead?
Said I hope they didn't miss anything.
No, I think they're pretty good.
And that's including the parking lot?
The parking lot, that one should come in by the end of next week. Yep.
Any questions? All right. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Planning and zoning uniform fee schedule. Mr. Powers?
Thank you, Council. So a little about the background. The Village Council reviews planning and zoning fees on a regular basis. During the June 29th, 2023 Village Council meeting, Doug Powers mentioned he would prepare a cost estimate of fees that is in line with the costs accrued for review. Recently, he has prepared documentation highlighting the cost for reviewing petitions for the Village Council considering changes to their current planning and zoning fees. So if we can go through these charts just a little bit for anyone has any possible questions. The first chart that you see details how the cost accrued, you know, was derived. Okay, where the second chart indicates comparable communities within the region, where you can see how our costs are, some of the communities are higher as well as others are lower. And on the final graph, I had included, you know, what are, or what I was suggesting in regards to some possible changes, being that there are a few of the permits that we aren't coming close to, you know, the percentage recovered, that this would get us closer in line to around the seventy percent and seventy percent of what the time and costs allocated being recovered from, you know, a permit being issued. Now, regarding what you see before you, you know, there is no fiscal impact to the village, you know, from the general fund. However, you know, additional dollars to be received for permits to be determined by adoption of a resolution at a future meeting as directed by the Village Council. So I'm really looking for some direction in regards to what you potentially like to see. It could be in line with what is included in this packet, or it could be something completely different, or of course, nothing at all. But whatever those requests are, we can then prepare that in a resolution to be presented to the council later. So that's where we said that the village, if you're looking at the alternative actions, those are stated. Have any questions? Anything you'd like me to dig into a little more?
I was just gonna say this would align with our best practices with the RRC also, if we adopted it.
Absolutely. Yeah, the RRC requests us to review our fee structure on an annual basis. So this was just derived from, I'd said I would look at what the numbers are and how we're recouping that. And this was what I came up with in regards to percentages. Of course, any fee structure is not able to be greater than what the costs are derived from the service. Anything else subjective to that is at your whim.
So I did see that you're not likely to review our marijuana fee structure. Do we know that we're coming out even on that?
So I have not performed any of those special use permits or anything required, you know, by the municipality as they were all issued before I started working here. I could certainly come up with, you know, some potential numbers, but it would be unfair for me to be as precise as I was with the other ones as I haven't done that. Yeah.
So I believe those are supposed to be reapplied for annually, aren't they?
They are. Where typically, when we're reviewing these annually, time in regards to planning, it may be, you know, three to four hours at most because generally going out, inspecting the site, reviewing what conditions were that were imposed, preparing a report for the manager and clerk so the necessary actions can be taken. And there may be some back and forth if, you know, improvements are needed, but.
It's a lot more labor intensive for a brand-new application as opposed to renewals. Renewals really don't take a whole lot of time at all, honestly, so. Yep.
Yeah, like four hours maybe.
As long as we're not, you know, going in the negative on these, I'm not worried about it. I know when we selected the fee schedule, we just took the status quo, which was about as high as we could charge.
Yeah. And I can't imagine that we're.
We're definitely not right now, yeah.
Okay. Anybody else?
I looked at these fees and I thought, anything ten, fifteen minutes. I know it'd be more kid of that. If it's going into an hour, you know, then we ought to make an adjustment.
So we feel like the recommendation would be for staff to prepare any proposed changes and bring them to a future council meeting?
Yes. Based on the labor.
So really a resolution adopting these said changes probably then, right?
So you're gonna involve the attorney with that? So you're gonna probably need a motion for that?
So we can most likely draft the resolution house. That's what we did before. So if you're good, if you want to make a motion, if that's how the council feels, we can work on drafting a resolution and likely bring that back at the last meeting in April estimating.
Sounds good.
Do you need it today? Because it sounds like we'd be spending a little bit of money. No?
No. Just to know what your interest is, if you're wanting us to prepare a resolution, if with what you suggested, we can prepare that resolution for that meeting. But should probably take a vote just to make sure.
I don't think you need a roll call because we're not spending money.
So we're not securing the attorney, so then it's just, okay.
There's zero cost.
Because like he says, we just take the one from last year, change the numbers.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's no legalese change.
Probably only need a general consensus to move forward.
Okay. I think we're, everybody good with that?
Yeah.
So then we'll just give you consensus and then we'll vote on it when it comes back as a resolution?
Sounds good. Thank you.
All right. So roof repair. Mr. Belson?
Good afternoon. So if Council does remember, I had this roof repair in front of council several agendas ago, and I pulled it off. I was waiting on some information that I'd gotten a third quote from another contractor. That quote came in much higher than the first two quotes, so I had to verify a couple of things for building codes before I could move forward with that. This all stems back from the hailstorm back in 2023. Immediately or very soon after the hailstorm, we inspected it with our adjusters and contractors. At the time, there was no damage, visible damage to the roof. Fast forward to fall of '23, we have a maintenance contract for a yearly inspection of village hall roof. They came and inspected and actually ended up finding thousands of dents in the roof. What happens with some of that rubber roof like that, once it expands and contracts a lot, those dents end up showing up pretty. Is covering the cost of this, up to sixty, just shy about $64,000 is covered in the cost of that. I'm asking Village Council to approve staff to spend up to $70,000, not in addition to that sixty-four. So that sixty-four plus an additional $6,000, and that extra six is just in case when the course of construction starts, something comes up, it gives a little cushion, even though we still could go back to insurance to ask for that reimbursement. But it just kind of gives staff a little bit of wiggle room just in case so we can move the process forward in case something happens during construction. Any questions on that? Yes, sir.
I know it's one of those quotes that talks about a quarter inch.
Hardboard?
Yeah.
Yes.
The other guy was three eighths.
Yeah, so right now I'm looking at the den's decking. That's what I'm looking at, a recommendation from CNI Building Materials. I've got, sorry, I got three quotes. The one company I'm looking at, I'm actually got a recommendation from very well local commercial industrial contractor, that was one of their subcontractors they use quite a bit. And that quarter inch den's decking they're referring to, it's almost like an OSB that they lay down and it should help protect the roof from hail damage going forward. And that's where that quarter inch comes in. No, more solid.
More solid.
Because right now the roof, there's a little cushion in the roof, so it is elastic, so allows that hail to go into the rubber membrane, actually push down versus that hard and stop it. Yes.
Well, I'll make a motion to approve staff to.
We moving this forward, Alec?
Yeah, we can move this forward. We don't have to approve. Sorry.
All right. So I'll make the motion to approve staff to.
You're just basically moving it forward to full council?
Yeah, we'll move it forward to full council.
Yeah.
A motion with support to move the approval of a village hall roof replacement from insurance claim for the hail damage from a 2023 hailstorm not to exceed $70,000 to full council. Any further discussion before we vote? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
I wasn't sure if we were gonna approve a specific person or not, so like.
Do that next week.
Yeah, we'll do that next week.
All right. Next, we have water service line replacements.
So water service line replacements, just a quick recap. Council remembers, we approved the second round of ARPA funding to move forward to all service line replacements. We have replaced eleven services so far. I'm looking right now to replace another eleven, and that's what that quote has in front of you from Tubergen Escavating. They've done the previous for us. They've done a very good job. I've gotten other quotes, did not get any quotes this time from other contractors, but I've got quotes from other contractors, and they typically come in eight hundred to $2,000 more per service over probably less than twenty services or so I've had over the last two years. Just to expedite the process, just I guess give council a recap of how we go about the process. We are identifying homes or neighborhoods of homes of, okay, we want to attack this area, this round of replacements. So we go, myself and Kim are calling and making appointments with homeowners. We're getting in the homes, verifying that they do have galvanized lines, taking pictures and measurements of all these lines in the homes. What is their basement layout? How is it, you know, is there a finished basement? Is it old Michigan basement? So on and so forth. Getting that all, all the measurements and everything collected. Then we send that out to the contractor. Contractor goes through all that information, gives us back pricing. And then fast forward today, I'm bringing this in front of you. So that process right there took about a month and a half to get to that point, just to get eleven services in the homes to the contractor to the back. What I'm asking permission to is just for council to give staff to go ahead, not to exceed $6,000 per service, moving forward to expel all the ARPA funds of the $165,000. So just to expedite this process. So I'm not having to, if it takes me two months to get a batch, then it takes me another week to three weeks to get in front of you to move forward, just so I can hopefully do five or six services at a time, just keep rolling right through these so we can get these done as quick as possible. Need more explanation? Let me know. Or any questions or comments?
I'll make a motion. We accept that recommendation and move it to full council. Support.
We have a motion with support to move the approval of the quote from Tubergen Construction in the amount of $31,800. Approve staff to place additional water services not to exceed $6,000 per service, including parts and labor until ARPA funds are fully exhausted in the amount of $165,590. Any further discussion before we vote? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Now we are on vector truck tank repairs.
Just before I get going on this, if possible, I'd like to see if we can have an approval tonight, if you guys saw our decision tonight on this one rather than moving this on. So our vector, our combination sewer vector truck, that does handles all of our water main breaks, cleans out our lift stations for us. If we have any sewer cleaning that we need to do, we use that, or if we use that on sewer backups as well. That truck has one main tank, that's the debris tank. When we suck anything, it holds and collects all the debris. And then it has five individual smaller tanks that hold roughly 1,800 gallons of water. Two of those individual tanks, we noticed we are doing some work on it, and just a little tiny seeping coming out of the tanks. They're aluminum tanks, similar to what you see on fuel tanks for a big semi. And they look almost identical, but they're bigger. They started seeping a little bit, so we put some. started seeping a little bit. So we put some epoxy on it and sealed it. Fast forward about two weeks from then, we've seen another quarter inch hole that came out of one of the same tanks. So we started looking into some pricing, trying to find the best cost and return to fix these tanks. I got this quote back from Jack Dohany Company's. They are the only distributor distributor and vendor in the state of Michigan for vector trucks. We could buy from another distributor, but they're going to buy it right from Jack Dohany with the upcharge. Those tanks came in $13,805 to replace two tanks. And that's just, that's not labor, that's just purchasing the tanks and us installing them. So at that time, staff decided that we need to try to figure something else. We made some phone calls and we did a lot of research. We found out that there's this epoxy that you could use that's designed for this and that we're going to try that route. Much cost, much cheaper option is about $150, $100 in material. So we're going to give that a shot. We took that tank off, started to prep the tank for that. Yeah. And we ended up finding about 40 or 50 holes that you could literally take a screwdriver and punch through. So at this point, they're not repairable. Yeah. At this point, they're not repairable. This is a 2007 truck. We bought this truck in 2019. So yes, 2007 is a older truck to be repairing. But in 2019, we purchased truck for $120,000. If we wanted to purchase this truck today, we'd probably be looking at about $500,000 to purchase this truck. So very small drop in the bucket for the amount of cost that this truck would be to replace. And just also let council know, previous to having this sewer vector truck, we were contracting with a local contractor to do a lot of this work. And we were spending somewheres between $22,000 and $30,000 a year in work that we'd be paying out and now that we're doing in-house. So.
So in the four years that we've had this truck, we haven't had to pay $120,000 in vendor fees because we have the truck that we bought for 150?
120.
120. So we've already made our money back on the truck.
Yeah. And unfortunately, this is a proprietary truck. A lot of these parts are custom made for each truck. There's multiple different manufacturers of these trucks, but when they manufacture each individual one, it's pretty proprietary to that truck.
Well, I'll make the motion for council to approve repairs of vector truck water tanks not to exceed $15,000.
Support. We have a motion to support to approve repairs from the vector truck water tanks not to exceed $15,000. Any further discussion before we vote? Hearing none. Rhonda, may I have the roll call, please?
Mackenzie Peters?
Aye.
Ann Williams?
Aye.
Stephen Baldry?
Aye.
Robert Bishop?
Aye.
Richard Hamilton?
Aye.
Mike Kramer?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Excellent. Thank you.
All right. So we are down to final public comment section. So I'm going to ask something of the board real quick. There are a lot of scouts here that might have questions. But if more than three of us stay after the meeting, that makes a core. Does everybody want to stay and answer questions?
Yeah.
All right, boys. Would you like to ask some questions? Well, there is a microphone over there. So if you could each come up one at a time and state your name to the microphone and ask your questions, that way all of us can answer them.
Maybe.
Maybe just first.
It's okay. They'll get it.
Yeah.
Hello, my name is Clyde Watson. At the high school, I've noticed that there's a moderate marijuana problem with a lot of the students. And I've heard rumors circulating that there may be like a marijuana store selling to underage people. Is there anything that the city can do about that?
So the school is a separate government body.
Okay.
They handle their own issues, but there are two resource officers that you can reach out to and ask those questions to and provide any information you might have. And that would definitely expedite the process.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Come on, Ian. You can do it.
Come on.
Yep. We're just people like you, only older.
Yeah. Come on, Ian.
That's good, Dad.
My name is Ian Hall Humphrey. How do you guys make changes? Like, how do you, how do you guys make decisions and changes?
Well, yeah, if you don't mind. Well, a lot of times if we need something done, the village manager and the staff will prepare a lot of information for us to make decisions. So like the truck Alec was explaining, you know, the history of it, how much it saved us money over the course of the years and why we can't use simple repairs to fix it. So he brought all that information, provided it to us to read and presented it again here at the council. And we made the decision of what worked best fiscally, so financially, and for the staff and what would work better for them to do their jobs.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. I'd like to add to it.
All right.
Ian? Ian?
Oh.
Right? We also have commissions. We have a planning commission director. Back to this fully employed by the village. And we have volunteer individuals that apply to be on that commission to work with the village for housing matters, zoning matters, construction, et cetera. So there is involvement by community members on commissions. And they make recommendations to this council. And we either approve those recommendations or ask for revisions or reject them with good reason. I hope it's good reason. I haven't sat here and rejected anything yet. Thank you for asking that question.
My name is Damian Roland. How can you find out what is important to the community?
Well.
You have to listen to the community first of all and listen to what they're saying, what's important to them. We had a meeting, I think it was our last meeting, we had, or two meetings ago, we had a resident here that police enforcement was important to him. Had he not come to the meeting and said that, we wouldn't have known it. There's, we have to get feedback from the residents of our village. That's who we're here to serve. So we need people to talk to us, to talk to all the staff, the committees that we just talked about. We need that information. That's where we start.
Thank you.
And it's perfectly okay to come up and talk to us when we're not here too. So if you run into us in the store, that's also how we find out information like that.
Probably better that way.
Plus I also want to give credit to the staff because they take a lot of that frontline communication from community members and present it to us as well. Come on, you guys.
Lana, there is no way you do not have a question.
Come on, you guys. You got to fly like eagles, right?
There's another meeting at seven o'clock. We'd like to get out of here.
Yeah.
If I may, I have a question for you all, if that's all right?
Yeah.
So what is, what makes this community home to you?
Besides where your parents have you lived.
Yeah. What do you like?
What I like is that houses and everything just getting repaired.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yes.
Helping out the community.
Okay.
Perfect.
Yeah. The middlevilleans?
Yeah.
Villions. How many of you are close to achieving your Eagle Scout?
Nice.
Nice.
Good for you.
Live is actually in the middle of this Eagle project right now.
Ah, good for you.
My grandson was an Eagle Scout. Middleville. That, that bag.
For my Eagle project, I'm doing it with the school and I'm going to build two benches and a little free library right outside of the library entrance and a little grass next to the.
Very nice.
Very cool.
Be careful how you build it or how big you build it. Because when you forget your dimensions, it doesn't sit on a four by four post anymore. You have to revise a little bit. Oh, man, you're going to have to come back to another meeting.
My name is Jacob Orick and I want to know how the youth could be more involved in the community.
Question. Oh, my gosh.
I'm going to give that right to our former parks and recreations.
Right. How do you, just like adults, you guys can come out and talk. Like, I know there's a lot of social anxiety. I do have that myself. But the more you're out and about during events, coming to meetings, the more you'll get to know people, the more you won't be scared to talk about things. And we do a lot of events. We do a lot of, like, especially in the summertime, just get out, talk more, ask questions. You don't even have to say anything. You just stand there. Like, really.
Plus you guys do a lot with Rotary too. So just keep that up. You know, you got the roadside cleanup coming up. We have the music by the series. So you can help with the grilling. I know Victor does amazing Halloween stuff, you know, so pulls everyone in for that. So if there's ever, ever something you guys want to do specifically Boy Scouts, you know, work with your troop leader, work with Craig and Rhonda and the staff and get a special event permit. You can do whatever you want within reason. There's so much opportunity to do stuff and we would love to help you in any way we can.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
They're just event permits now. They're not special anymore.
They're all special. Because they're all special.
Oh, here he comes.
Hello, I am Miles Rosenberger. How, how does one actually become a council member?
Anybody want to jump on? Actually, you know what? I haven't let Bob start yet.
So the way, the way I did it was not the standard way. Someone had resigned due to health reasons and I applied a bunch, along with a bunch of other applicants and then had to come here and interview and was appointed. Now, the regular process is what I'm going to be doing pretty soon here. And you have to get, collect signatures to end up on a ballot, which will then get filed with the county. And they'll put you on the ballot and then come election time, we get votes. All right. And so come November, you know, my seat's up and someone else's, a couple others. Yeah. So, so we'll end up on the ballot and people will vote for us or not. All right.
And along with that, you go make a bunch of copies about who you are and what you want to do. And you get some kids to spread them around town.
You know, I'm not going to lie, I've had a lot of luck with like business cards with a QR code on them and hand them out on Halloween.
So, so one of, so one of the ways that they, because I was a commissioner for the troop here, one of the ways that they set for recruitment was to put stickers onto Halloween candy and hand it out. And that was one of the better recruitment tools that you could use. And it works pretty well. We got a lot of good responses when we did that.
Because most all parents check the candy.
Christmas parade too, yes.
Or trustees, they're, they're all of them.
Yep.
So like myself, I don't get to vote for this because I live outside of the village, even though my address is Middleville. I don't get to vote for who sits here. Does that make sense?
It's a four-year term.
And they're staggered. So the interesting thing is, so we have three seats up every two years. And then the village president seat is up every two years as well. So that's constantly rotating. So you never get a whole fresh board at once. Sometimes, you know, it's staggered that way.
Sometimes you do.
Sometimes. Like the last two years have been interesting. But, but also if you don't live in the village, you have the township, which is similarly structured as well.
All right. All right. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. There he is.
Last one?
Hi, my name is Lena Hall Humphrey. And I noticed that the building across from Pharaoh's got tore down. And how are we making sure that like none of like the breaks or something got into the river?
Ooh, Doug.
I think he's asking the council.
We can get that to staff. That's okay.
So whenever someone is doing demo work, they have to submit a fair permit to demonstrate how they're going to actually deconstruct the building to make sure that there are no issues, like you said, contamination in the water, anything like that. So we do have a process, you know, for making sure of that. And that property as well, had a project manager looking at this for environmental reasons too. So they didn't just look at it to make sure that bricks didn't end up in the water, wanted to make sure that there was no potential contamination.
You know, they do core boring, escrow through the state and all that before they can do it.
Good question.
Good question.
All right.
Good answer.
Well, thank you so much, troop. We appreciate you guys being here.
Thank you guys for sitting around and answering questions. I appreciate it. Make sure you guys, thank them for letting us do the Halloween and especially Alec over there. He's the one that got us all hour and everything. Everything going there, so. It's your time of the day to help me out.
So the biggest thing to take away from this, as you all know, you're in scouts, you see your parents volunteering for this. Some of you play soccer, looking at two of you in particular, and your parents help coach this or sometimes end up refereeing this. Now remember that the stuff that you get to enjoy right now, your parents are putting in the extra effort to make sure that happens. So the big takeaway here is that volunteerism needs to carry on through the generations. If you want your kids someday, or your cats, depending on which kid you are, to have these experiences, you need to pay attention and remember that, you know, this, this doesn't just happen. It takes people in the community to put this stuff on. So be especially thankful for your scout master and your troop leaders because they're, they're giving their time freely to make sure that you have the same experience that they had. So I appreciate you all coming out here and I respect the dedication that you put in through scouting to get to where you're at. So thank you. So thank you for coming.
Thank you.
I'd, I'd like to say one more thing. If you are at all close to getting your eagle, push hard for it. Because the, the friends of mine that I have that did not get their eagle regret it to this day. I, I got, I got mine. It was very, very close to not happening, but it's worthwhile. Continue to do it.
Yep, be prepared, right? Well, I, I was a Cubs Scout packmaster here many years ago. It was a lot of fun.
I was also Cubmaster for three years, I think.
Any other public comment before we move on to final council comment? Alright, anybody wanna start?
For us?
Yep.
I got a couple things. We had talked in meeting ago, I believe, that we would bump Craig and Alex's spending limit from three thousand upward. Did we prepare anything for that, or is that just?
We can bring something next meeting.
Yeah. Okay, with respect to the sewage pump that?
Yep.
So you didn't have to wait two weeks for approval. And then the other thing for me is our computer security with this Duo thing. I have never, I gotta figure out three ways to say that the scouts are here. What I'm talking about is, we have our laptop. We have a sixteen character password that I can't begin to memorize. So I have to have it written down, or on my phone as a, as a file.
Mine's super secure.
Yeah, mine's, but then my phone from AT&amp;T that I recently bought about five months ago, with, the way it works is I put in my password, my computer won't start until the phone gives me a, a thing that says, is it okay to start the computer? So it's gotta talk back to the computer, and then my computer starts. Well, this weekend, AT&amp;T did an update that I didn't want on my phone, and my phone quit working. So I had to take it back to them. So last night, as I'm trying to prepare for today's meeting and get the agenda and all this type of thing, I put in my password, and all of a sudden it went, gotta have your, and I'm like, well, I don't have that, the AT&amp;T store does. So I have some issues with, with, with doing it this way.
Welcome to the artificial intelligence world.
I've been in artificial intelligence for a long time, ever since Shock invented the dye-up we've had. In fact, just go back a little bit, Motorola's first relay, it started the whole thing, but. At any rate, this is something that
It's cumbersome.
It handcuffs you if you get in that situation.
Right.
But, just wanna point that out, so I wasn't able to do my stuff before I did. I'm glad we had a link vote, but.
Just a, an FYI, if we ever have that issue, you're welcome to contact staff for a hard copy of the packet.
Okay.
Yep, we can do that anytime.
Alright, anybody else? Ian, you wanna?
The other FYI, mine has not been working either, because I haven't, but you can go on the village, I'm going on the village site in the
DocuCenter.
Yes.
See, there's other issue there, is number one, it couldn't get the computer started without it. And number two, they did an update recently because of the emails. I used to get the village email and stuff, my Outlook on my phone. And now that's quit working as soon as they did that, that update. I don't, I just gotta take another five hours like I did with this Duo thing to get it working, and then try to address that. But it used to be I got everything on my phone, and I can't do that anymore.
This is why I have great grandpa's phone.
So you know, that, that old excuse, my dog ate the homework.
I'll go see him.
No, that was pretty much it.
I just wanna say thank you, boys. Amazing. I know a bunch of you, and it's good to see you, and thanks for coming and making our meeting a little bit more fun.
I'll give you one more thing about volunteering. See that guy down there with the beard, Mr. Bishop? I was his Little League coach last week.
Last week? He's Grovesburg.
You never know when you volunteer to do something, what you're gonna bring along behind you.
Right.
Good again?
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you for coming, and come again. Come again when we have some exciting fireworks here. Today's meeting was very abbreviated compared to some of the meetings. So thank you for coming.
Well, for me, I just wanna say thank you for coming. As a volunteer in the community myself, and having worked with Victor on a couple things, I can tell you volunteerism is one of the most fulfilling things you can do for your community, and gives you a sense of purpose when it's hard to find something like that in today's world. So I do applaud you guys on your continued efforts to improve our community and be a part of it, and, you know, keep at it. So thank you for coming.
I was once your guys' age, and out in that gallery doing the exact same thing for setting the community. I had to present my Eagle project to the village council, because it was gonna be built out in this park out here. Was later moved to the end of the rail trail, and then later destroyed. That, we replaced it with a sign that was much better than the one that I built. But, but yeah, thank you for coming out, and continue on the path, and have fun.
Pretty much said everything I was gonna say. So, you came out here, stood at that podium, and you talked to us, didn't you? Pretty scary the first time, isn't it? But it's not the second time, right? Or the third time, or the fifteenth time? So if you ever have a problem in the village, when you're an adult, don't be intimidated to come down and tell us. Because as you now know, we're all members of the community just like you. So if you find us at a grocery store, or wearing yellow at a soccer game, you can tell us anything you need to.
Yeah.
Kind of our job.
Might get you a yellow card, though.
Your comment, your appropriate comments will not get you a yellow card, but your shoulders will.
President Kramer, he's, he's telling you right when you get up here and you have this nervous, isn't it, up there? I remember my speech class in college, I gave a great speech about how a shotgun shell is built and constructed. Teacher said it was a great speech, but you talked to the blackboard instead of the people.
Doesn't stir.
You might wanna explain what a blackboard is, you know?
Okay, does staff have anything to add tonight?
Just a reminder of strategic planning Thursday, starting at five o'clock, and we will have some snacks, but come fed with your own dinner, if you could, so eat before you arrive.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Support, we have a motion with support to adjourn. Any further discussion before we vote? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. opposed, motion carries. Meeting's adjourned, thanks for coming.
Thanks for being here, everybody.